I would like to welcome you to our city council meeting tonight. Um, just want to let know it's been your tape and Steve. Wife is out of town. So we'd like to excuse them. We'd like to start off by uh. Our team led allegiance. You know. You all be thrives. And we. It's. If well. Let's see. Right for this day to be here in city council meeting. Great for the opportunity we have to serve. And be able to talk about the things of our area, things of uh our city. Grateful for all the many citizens that are here. To participate in as well as uh recognize new new people to our to our area. Again, we're grateful for all that we have. Plus those that are aware, so we say this thing that you described. This council been able to uh three minutes from August eight as presented. Can I get a motion please?
I'm certainly approved the. The the meeting minutes from August eight two thousand. That's presented.
One second.
A second. All in favor? Thank you. Okay, next we have a list for Michael Duffy and Christina Flitfield. Uh they both uh. Come up um if you be okay with you. So. In one or two minutes, a little bit about yourself, please first. We spent that time for thirty seconds or something.
Uh Christina Flitfield. To Little Boys. I worked at Jeff and the Police Department doing records. I previously took a little break to be with my kids. I used to work for Plaza View. Went for that Roy City, so I worked a lot more spent for just over ten years, so. And my my husband knew that and he's here. Sorry, I'm gonna say.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Uh I'm Officer Michael Duffy, uh newest member of the police department, just graduated from the. Weaver State University's Police Academy. Said uh people are at Harrisonville and can uh serve the great the community.
Right to appreciate that. Let's go ahead and.
Okay, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear. Solely swear that I will support, obey, and defend. The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the.
The Constitution of the State of Utah.
Constitution of the State of Utah.
And that I will discharge. The duties of my office.
The duties of my.
Was by Dylan.
You guys want to.
And so.
Let's see that. Let's see. Which data? Say. You guys want to cut to get the church? You good? And uh thanks for who that is.
Thank you, welcome and order. Hey, next time business uh. Y C C flag contest presentation and I believe uh it's gonna be by Lily Hanson.
All right, it's Emily Hanson from the Utes City Council, and this is our. Presentation on the Harrison City Box interest. Okay, so uh last year we were assigned to kind of um headboard the Harrison City flag. And so we met with the Utes City Council as well as the mayor and we decided to hold a citywide contest. Um with the best flag design first, second, along with honorable mention. And so our design criteria was was decided by um the Utah Official State for twenty twenty two. And we began the contest June first and right until the eleven thirty first. Um the contest through the city website is on our Facebook page and marquee for two months and we received eight entries. And and this is the following design criteria. Alright, so number one uh was to keep it simple. You go for it, yeah. Number two, um use meaningful symbolism. Number three, use two basic colors. Uh number four, the lettering or seals, and five, these seem good or we don't need it. Right? Okay, so this is entry number one, you might have to click it. There it goes. Um so this is from Jesse Paz and he used a lot of uh same elements from our current Harrison City logo. Uh. Okay, number two is from Rosaline Wallace. Um she represented the community and grew within her. Number three was from Hudson Pike. Uh he represented our city parks as well as our playground. He also put in a request for his lines to be placed in Harrison City. Okay, number four from Ron Saunders. Uh he represented our courtyard, the rail road, as well as Harrison City cabin. And this is also for Ron Saunders. This was more of a simplistic design, but still we are. I near heritage as well as. Number six was from Del Olson. Um this represents more of our national base as well as our mountains. Number seven from Mickey Burrows. Um she included the cabin as well as the green for our. This is from the Y C C. Uh lots of different color representing Harrison and surrounding area as well as the cabin. And this is just a little overview. Okay, so we met in August and discussed submissions. Uh we also met with the mayor and the city administrator um to discuss these. And we decided to not choose a way of the rest. The submissions were all well thought out and all contained very good elements, however, we didn't see Harrison represented completely in any one of them. Um so we appreciate the efforts of all of these flags. Um and we still will um hand out our proms to cash prizes. Um however, instead through a letter, instead of announced at the fall festival. Um. They have completed the assignment given by the council and we officially want to turn the Harrison Flag Project back over to the city council. And propose working with a graphic designer to create a better vision of what Harrison City represents. Any questions?
Thanks for all the work you do.
Of course. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Alright. Next item. On black and approve striking of tennis court for pickleball. Right, but.
Even council, sounds like we may be discussing in the near future. Uh hopefully you had a chance to look at the memo. Um just to follow up to previous discussions on pickleball. Lines are with two options. Uh clearly the second option is not an option due to rising. Just to dim this or uh just to pressure wash existing court and pick ball lines over existing tennis court lines. And install sport wax protection. Uh optional utilizes one existing tennis court net and adds one pickleball court overlay to that tennis court using the existing tennis net. For two thousand two hundred forty six dollars. Um my recommendation is leave it alone. Uh focus our efforts on seven fifty west rocket, but. That's the number. I do have money to pay for that if that's something you decided you wanted to do.
For sure. Would it just be one pickleball court?
Could be one pickleball court. Overlaid over the tennis court. If they demoed a tennis court, they could get three pickleball courts out of one tennis court.
So it'd be a combination tennis court.
It would.
Sure.
Yes.
For discussion.
What's kind of feedback will be getting to the public? I know. We've talked. And I don't know what's coming out. As far as from the public.
I have only heard from two people over the years since we've talked about simple log words and. The the problem they see is the noise from the rackets. Would would you be from neighbors of the tennis courts? That's the only. Negative response I've had. I haven't talked to anybody who said, yeah, let's go for it, but I have heard those two. Responses over the last couple of years.
I know that in as in Pleasant View and their. Projects during these negative pickleball courts up there, I know there are ones in Far West. Right?
Pleasant View, Far West, Plain City. All over. And we have some proposals for the seven pin rocket, aren't they? On assignment. There's true for Pleasant View, they're adding. So.
Those are the things that we built, they've come. So needed to.
They'll come. Uh I think I think it'll be used. About you.
That's good. So you have to. That's why. And I think it's. That is. Do you want to? That's why.
I have. Things I'd like to say is we move the ends of that all at the same time. You bring up one objection is is that it could be a noise back in the day. And that could be everyone's complaining because there are rules wouldn't play when you hear.
Right. And the park is open till ten, the lights can stay on till ten P M. Um those were just thoughts that I heard and tough neighbors. I have talked to tennis people who. Will despise having pickleball court lines over their tennis courts, but. It's just their opinion as well.
That's I think if you were not. Pickleball person to do very same too. Says for. I think you're right. It's funny. Okay. You can vote in the form. Striking tennis cards for pickleball. Councilmember Loveland. Oh, excuse me, I need a motion first. So how we present a motion? Sound like we don't. So we leave the motion table. By David David. At here. Okay, I. Start. Not proposal. Most than that we uh deny striking the test. Second. All in favor? I. Thank you. Oh, thank you. Is there any names on uh this title? Thank you. Alright, next discussion possible action to adopt ordinance five forty two home occupation standards amendments. Danny Day.
Included in your packet with a memo, a staff memo, was telling me the applications we received from that Cox for a change amendment to our land use. The application is in. Reference to a home occupation to use a permanent makeup machine for use of cosmetics and in addition to. In our current code or regulation for home occupation during food personal services and allow. Home occupation, but two other businesses not allow use in commercial manufacturing. So as the home occupations are typically restricted strict than regular business codes are allowed uses. She goes to make sure that we. And specifically what is lack. Nation, so the proposed change to the land support that would include. The use of a permanent makeup unit for those purposes cosmetic and scar purposes. So the planning commission held a public area. To relieve public tunnels and no. No name was. It's actually seen during the public area. To you with upon the reputation from the. You the discussions.
Thank you. Alright, any discussion further discussion on this? The only question I have is. That's my only concern. That's super busy street.
So that was here a kitchen put in in. Our packet was a. Site of the.
I didn't see.
We put. So that's I stand corrected. That is included in the official application for the. It's important. So I can actually pull up, but um let me room. So this is the changes of the sites, but the. The parking would be addressed. And like I said, but this is a tax change event to be entitled to. Similar to the. Alright, so we.
Oh, you can you mentioned there was a. That to the. Yeah.
Yeah. Is specifically the makeup unit has no. But under the state licensing, what was the city attention money with state licensing? There they used to be open this machine the same. It's used, so makeup is different. Machine. So it's not one of the same, but the so those are you we want. Patient standard. Like to export home occupation.
Anything else?
Just the clarification, yeah. We know what this is going to be used for, but it'd be useful to.
No, the machine is actually different from. Tattooing machine, so it doesn't have the same. My understanding is it does not have the same capacity. It doesn't. It it doesn't protect the skin and it. With the same ink ratio tattoo machine. And it it does fade over time. This is type. Fades over time. So it's just. Renew it, but it's not as permanent. Available, so. What a machine.
Your purpose, we're.
Sure.
We're discouraging even tattoos. In actual machine available, this is not. So this is specific. Yes, okay, thank you.
Any else? Okay, on this one uh. Need a motion and then this will be a roll call also, so. Make a point the Dallasville. Or five forty two. What eight standards? Seven. Hey, Councilman. Yes. Or Jackson, yes, Councilman Christensen, yes, Councilmember Willam. Yes. Thank you. Okay, next, I'm discussing possible action for the. Resolution twenty three thirteen. Resolution event in the Harrison City. Consolidated fee schedule.
So in June of this year, we. Did a consolidated fee schedule rather than having our fees embedded in her own, which makes us easier. Hope and so it's easier way for this city to maintain schedule. At the time of that adoption, there are several fees that we. Have available or ready to adopt that to its fee schedule. So this new. Version of the fee schedule includes out. Fees that were. That previous function, so it includes the storm. Should should the additional building inspection, the park impact, stormwater. Super recreation being the various administrative fees and police fees are now. So it is just a base of the schedule to. He said previously.
Any further discussion on this one? Hey, did you get a? Off black to adopt resolution twenty three thirteen?
I'll make the uh motion to. Actually, uh resolution twenty three thirteen. Resolution in many Harrison City's consolidated.
I'll second it. Hey, this is a roll call also. Uh Councilmember Loveland, yes. Councilmember Jackson, yes. Councilmember Christensen, yes. Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
That's. Alright, next. Discussion possible action to adopt ordinance five forty three storm water enforcement response plan, Justin.
Council, this witness is not dated. An update that we got through the state of Utah. Starting forcing and assessing fines. Uh construction activity, so more portion of it. So anytime that we have. Um come in and they. Allow them spend ten through the state or uh. Home build, we're now. Having ramifications that we can actually assess fines if they do a concrete washout. And unapproved swat if they don't have their best management practices. In order and in line if they trap mud and debris out on the road and we have to go help clean it up. So it's just. Something that we can. Have firm in our code that we can say this is why we're binding you. This is why, you know, it's all backed by the state of the.
Oh, yours isn't it?
It will be myself and Glenn, yeah. So.
And.
All quick inspections.
Oh, that one. You prosecuted through. How does it work? It's not a they want to contest it.
It's really not a contestable. It 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 do the state and.
Yeah.
Legislation.
It's a civil plus administrative, you can find it's not a criminal, so I think that's that was my question. Thank you. Any other comments for for Justin? This will also be. Well called, but I need an option to adopt. Ordinance five forty three storm one enforcement response plan. Almost have to adopt ordinance five forty three storm water enforcement response. Second. Thank you. Hey, uh roll call, Councilmember Loveland, yes. Councilmember Jackson, yeah. Smooth for Christiansen, yes. Councilmember Williams, yes. Here's. Hey, next. Discussion possible action to adopt resolution. Twenty three fourteen, a resolution approving the contract with Weaver School District for S R O services.
So this is a three year contract to provide school resource officer to Orion Junior High and Majestic. Um. This has been a discussion between the school and. The chiefs and chefs that are involved in the. Negotiations on, I said it's a three year contract. The first year, whether it formula works is they take seventy percent of what the F P E costs. To to subtract the months that they're not in school. The first year they'll pay fifty percent of that seventy percent. The next year progresses to sixty, the next year will be seventy, and then at that point, we we negotiate again. But that F D the cost does change each year with the increases, so that's negotiated with the contract. But that that. Number that they use for the calculations will change from year to year. The the information you got was just kind of a prediction. But it will change with that.
So is it based off what we're paying or is it a standardized deal for the whole county?
So it's standardized, everybody turned in what. Each city's uh F P Es were and they kind of averaged that out and came up with a hundred and seventy thousand. Is what they're based on. That's benefits um administrations. That's everything that that it costs the city for an employee. And then it's based on that number.
You have your questions, Tom, is. So you don't do that.
Yeah, I think we, I mean, we're gonna provide services regardless, right? So, right. I know the school, the school district struggling just like we were, so we've tried to to face it in where they can account for the extra money as well, so. Yeah, I mean, this is the best. The best outcome we could. Could probably.
Are they specifying how much time dedicated to each school or they they leaving out of those?
No, that was kind of a. Session. Um. We're gonna continue services like we have been. Obviously, they're not paying a hundred percent of that officer be there, so they can't expect them to be over there a hundred percent of the time. But if there is an extended absence um. Over a week, they expect someone to backfill. So they understand the vacation, the training and this, but if somebody's out come more, we we're expected to put someone over back to that position until they get back or or we hire someone.
So typically, does our S R O spend time in both schools every day or how does that work?
I'm not sure how it goes over to Majestic. I think he goes over there as needed. Um both principals have. Or is the information? And and Dennis is at this point um. In November, Sergeant Davis will be over the S R O program, so she'll have. They'll have her information as well, and if or he's gone, she will be the one backfilling.
Alright. Do the action to adopt the resolution.
Maybe. Action to. Uh twenty three dash fourteen. Resolution improving a resolution improving contract with Weaver School District for the S R O services.
I'll second it. It is from a roll call. Councilmember Loveland, yes. Councilmember Jackson, yes. Councilmember Christensen, yes. Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Thank you. Alright. We're down to uh public comments. If there's anybody in in the room that would like to get up, uh please state your name and your address. And uh you have three minutes. Go ahead and uh I turn that time over to you. If you'd like to get up and comment. Okay, I think we're. No public comments this time. Thanks, uh. We'll move on to ma- mayor and uh council follower. Do you have anything from the? You guys? Great.
Um. I don't know if anybody's been able to see, um, but we have. Almost completed the two. Uh, projects with the uh schools, safe sidewalks to schools. Two thousand north is looking, Jessica's also looking good. We've done, we've got a little bit better finished work on Jessica, who gets signs up. Essentially, parents have been able to start using that drop-off zone for their kids. And then two thousand's now full, that has a. A full sidewalk, so kids can more available and. A lot of city boundaries, all on all on sidewalk.
Yes, those are both, that's cool, thank you. They're great.
Yeah, that's kind of what we've been working on for the last little while, and I will move on to. Our next project.
Thank you.
So it just an updated on on our renovation process, um. We expect to be ready for our first review within the next eight months on our renovation. Uh, to start that process if not sooner. Uh, we just applied for a JAC grant, um. To update our training and E O C room downstairs with new equipment that are power points and and that kind of stuff. And then we're working on a plan to address some of these issues in the school zones, it's come up with the. With the drop-off behind uh Majestic at the parking, and I think we need to be over there and use enforcement and teach people how to use it. Where they should measure to be. And some uh speed issues on two thousand, whether why today? Speeds have been picking up a little bit, so guys have been really focusing on those areas, hopefully in the next couple of weeks, people will start getting used to it and. They resolve the issues.
Thank you.
Well, we're excited to be putting the splash pad to bed. Yeah. We ordered a couple of projects that we have scheduled for the fall. Uh, those basketball registration just closed, getting ready for boys' basketball registration in October, so. Doing what we do, we're gonna make a big push uh for the secondary water, well, to get strength first change that stuff already. Better in this room, so it's kind of doing right now.
Thank you, I just like to put it on the end of the fall festival, you have a calendar date, it's correct, till week seventeen, it's a great opportunity for anyone also. That's seeking reelection or election to take advantage of that opportunity as well. And uh. If you have any businesses you'd like to approach, and honestly, we are taking donations for that event. If anybody wants to reach out, there's a digital slot. We can go back to it. I think of. Just a quick update, we're seeing one of the things, um. We have contacted some additional Jones and Associates. Employees that are helping us with our lending services and also our subdivision review. To do to me, some vision, some data, you could put it to place before that you were created, so it's a little over six months to complete that process, and we are well into that way, that. Process, in fact, we had a meeting for the staff for damage and all, we're seeing final details of orphans, so it will be, it does. On a recent level, so we'll meet that. You know, October, and they continue to discussion on them. This, excuse me, October, November, to the council after their renovation. To that through their community, there's changes there that. People can address some of our great things or opportunities for us to, and a little bus I talked about. See, the good news is that I have not given anything from the different experiences, which can interpret a new news as good news. And we don't hear anything, we definitely don't want another letter that we received last year, so that's kind of been our. Housing, um, we just completed the week conference last week, and our. Looks like from representation from the official officer will be likely October, this November, this year, it should be out. Yeah. The business will. Again, I just have them. All with trees in January, let's the second. Be scheduled. Fourth Tuesday of January. Three, or four, again. So that's a special organ, so that really.
Thank you. Hey. Our number.
This is God, and I'm just finding the scene. You know, we we get a continually solicitations to go through our neighborhood, we understand the ordinance system, they come to our house, we say, first tag. And it's always in the car that you're supposed to have it on, by the time, you know, I actually called when it. Detail that is asked for just a non-service call. Let's be on the phone for almost five minutes to try to get information back through Harrisville. As it's our details, and I understand that it's just a little curvy, so without a hurt to me. Is there any way we could possibly? Um, have some type of a. A logo or label or something put up that people can hang on the door and said, if you're assigned, please don't know. Something like that, that would start to become aware. People in our city that they don't have, and people who are solicitation without having the city's approval and tax anymore. And that's just, I got, how how we handle this, and I think informing people, but also on the door saying it was for Harrisville, you don't pay. You have enough contact in Harrisville City and got approval and wear a tax, there's no. There's nothing to be done. Oh. It's what we're doing. I know that there may be some cost, but I think there's some information that's there. They're giving giving information like that to our public would help soon when I want to basically control this and still filters through. And the ordinance is expensive, or a property, that maybe not this affected me, but I, you know. When I was sorry, I mean, last time I was, so it's. It was interesting to see how many of those solicitations started throughout, the sample reading very specific. Jokingly, but specific or interesting. So, I don't know, just thought of it. I don't know if we could pursue it, but I thought it'd be worthwhile to do one.
Councilmember Loveland, uh, do we have time to follow this? Yeah, starting. Alright.
The fun. It is start. But and use. And. Food supply will be a fire.
Okay.
And there will be, um, the finalized fire.
Hey, and then fire, we set our.
Yes, you have fired this, yes, small change to timeline, it will be at seven thirty instead of that.
Okay, thank you for giving the time. And then the other question I have is, has somebody asked me about? Kid, park, and bar. It would, thanks, did you tell us, I was trying to. You told us it's order, I mean, this falls.
Yeah. It's all.
Okay, that's what I told him.
It it is made for.
Okay, thank you. That's it, thank you. Speaker Jackson.
So. You have your word, I work two political paths, I'm on the fire board. And uh. Chief Dave Wade, after thirty-eight years, is choosing to retire. There's gonna be a retirement rate for him on September twenty-second. One to four in the afternoon. We're in the process of picking a new chief. Uh, the committee. Has narrowed the field down to. Uh. We've. We've got uh several stakeholders. That have volunteered to help pick the the new chief throughout the unity, uh. We're in the process, there'll be meetings, uh, starting this week. Thursday at five thirty. Where they'll be able to hear from the candidates and uh. Process, the board will pick one of the two candidates to be our new chief, so, so. And cool. Big promotion on Dave going, he's. He's been there so long, and uh, some said fantastic. We're gonna miss him, so I think it'd mean a lot. Sure. Well, it's new and that was. With my second.
Thank you. I have anything new, so. Right? Take a motion to close public comments, or excuse me, mayor and council follower. Can I get a motion to close? Sixty session. Both this paper. We'll get it right once, something. I get emotionally closes. I mostly disclose, council meeting. And go into a close session. For the purposes, um. For the purposes described, you see a fifty-two dash four dash two oh five. On a discussion of the character professional competence or physical or mental health of the individual. Second. This is a roll call, uh. Councilmember Loveland, yes, councilmember Jackson, yeah, Chris, yes, councilmember Williams.
Yes.
I'm watching the video journey. City Council, sir. So, all that's. All in favor, aye. Yeah, folks.